All right, are we ready?
We're ready as we're gonna be.
All right, good evening, everyone. All this meeting with the city council to order today is October 24, 2023. It's my birthday.
Oh, it's my birthday!
Happy birthday!
Turn 21.
We'll sing up in a minute.
I know we could do a live happy birthday.
I accept anything as gift, including money. Thank you. So, it's Tuesday, like I said, October 24th. And what the clerk called the rules, please?
We started, I'm sorry, 7:08?
7:09.
7:09, all right. Councilman Khadi?
Present.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Councilman Traugry?
Present.
Councilman Huwud?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yeah, present.
Councilman Hassan?
Present.
Mayor's president, president, president. And Abu Musa is running late, so I'll talk to him in a minute. We have a call on Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any community announcements?
Just the trick-or-treat tomorrow, Mayor. Let's post it on here. Sent it all around. I believe it starts at 5:00 out front, if I'm not mistaken? Yep, 5:00 PM to 6:30.
Okay. No more announcements?
Mr. Chair. I just received an email from a high school student who was a vice president at a social justice called the Hamtramck High School. They're doing a protest for Palestine that will be Friday, November 3rd, from 11:30 to 12:30. It will be at the high school.
Is that out front, Councilman?
They didn't, I guess...
Yeah, I guess it didn't. Let's see the email too.
Yeah, I guess it is in the front. Starting location will be at Hamtramck High School.
Q4, that's me. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we move to the proclamations, recognitions, and presentations, and we have proclamation honoring and remembering Richard Dobek.
Can I read that?
Councilman, you want us... Okay. Either I can or you can, whatever. You'll do?
Whereas, as with heavy heart and profound sorrow that we, the City of Hamtramck, gather today to pay tribute to a man whose unwavering dedication to our community exemplifies the highest ideals of public service. And whereas Richard Dobek, a devoted and steadfast guardian of our city, joined the Hamtramck Police Reserve in 1968, demonstrating a commitment to the safety and well-being of our citizens that endured for over five decades. And whereas Richard Dobek's service to the Hamtramck Police Reserve was marked by a timeless, tireless pursuit of excellence, unwavering dedication, and a passion for upholding the law, earning him the respect and admiration of his colleagues, the police department, and the entire community he served. And whereas throughout his distinguished career, Richard Dobek rose through the ranks, exhibiting remarkable leadership and exceptional performance, ultimately achieving the esteemed position of Reserve Deputy Chief, where he provided guidance, mentorship, and leadership to his fellow officers. And whereas, as with great sadness that we acknowledge the passing of Reserve Deputy Chief Richard Dobek on October 21st, 2023, leaving a void in our community that cannot be filled. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City of Hamtramck in deep appreciation of the indelible mark left by Richard Dobek honors his memory and service to our community. We offer our heartfelt condolences to his family, friends, and colleagues, and we express our profound gratitude for his unwavering commitment to the safety and security of our city. May we remember and celebrate the legacy of Reserve Deputy Chief Richard Dobek, a dedicated public servant who exemplified the highest standards of duty, honor, and integrity. Signed, Mayor Ahmed Galad.
Thank you.
Mr. Chief, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, a moment of silence for a good friend of mine. I worked with him in the same department. So, moment of silence, please.
Thank you.
Mayor, say a couple more words. I know everybody in this room is aware, but some of the people at home are not aware. Deputy Chief Dobek passed away over the weekend. Up until that day, he was an active member of the Hamtramck Police Department for 55 years. All that time volunteering. And he will be greatly, greatly missed. Today, we actually have with us retired Reserve Chief Kevin Shuminsky to accept the proclamation on his behalf as well. He came in to get it. But I just want to say a heartfelt thank you for all the time that Rich devoted to the city.
Thank you.
Counselor, I would like to thank you for running the deepest hearts of the reserves.
If you want to stop, please. So you don't be recorded.
I want to thank you guys, deepest heart for the reserves. I served with Rich for 26 years. I lived and raised in the city, and I served the department also. Thank you, greatly appreciate it. I will make sure family members get this also, and I'm sure they're thankful also. Unfortunately, I didn't know till the last minute this was coming. I probably have a little bit more reserves here. But again, thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Next proclamation is Halloween proclamation.
I'll go ahead and read that also. Whereas the City of Hamtramck upholds the... I'm sorry, just one moment. Let me make this a little bigger on my screen. Whereas the City of Hamtramck upholds the annual tradition of Halloween trick-or-treating. And whereas the City of Hamtramck is committed to ensuring the secure environment for children to partake in this tradition. And whereas the City of Hamtramck can better provide a safer environment for trick-or-treaters by establishing a date and time for the activities. The City of Hamtramck has determined, it prudent, to temporarily modify the curfew ordinance as follows. On Monday, October 30th, 2023, the curfew shall be in effect at 7:00 PM instead of the usual 10:00 PM. On Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, for Halloween trick-or-treating, the designated hour shall be from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. The City of Hamtramck encourages all participants to exercise caution when crossing streets and whenever feasible to be accompanied by an adult or guardian. The City of Hamtramck urges all vehicle operators to exercise heightened vigilance during the designated trick-or-treating hours to ensure the safety and well-being of all participating individuals.
Thank you. Last one is Hamtramck Parks Conservancy introducing new executive director.
Mr. Mayor, we have Mr. Havitz here. You want to come on?
Yeah, I've got a presentation.
Oh, Ronnie, you have the...
Yes, sir. Bear with me, please. If you want to start with the presentation or you want to introduce yourself first?
I can talk while you pull it up.
Okay, sure.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. My name is Tom Havitz, and I'm the new executive director of the Hamtramck Parks Conservancy. Familiar with many of you from around town. I've been a longtime Hamtramck resident now and volunteer in the city. So it's a real privilege and honor for me to be in this role and address you as such. So if you want to go to the next slide, or do I have the ability?
Nope, just say next, and I'll do it for you.
So what I want to start with was a little bit of the background on the organization. I know a number of the room have familiarity with kind of how we've gotten to this point. But what is a conservancy? It's a question that I've been asked, so I thought it would be good to kind of start there and talk about how the organization was formed and some of its background. So it is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, so it functions in a lot of ways like you're familiar with the way that nonprofits do. It can own land, receive grants. You see the list of things that it has the ability to do, but we're kind of still in startup mode right now. The organization was formed in order to overcome some of the fragmentation just based on the legacy of the way the park's management had evolved over time in Hamtramck. So we're starting with the southern end, the Recreation District, as we're calling it. And so it's intended to bring new capacity. So I'm the only staff member now, but we're looking to add to that. And to be able to implement long-range planning in a way that hasn't been done quite on a detailed level, including capital planning for major investments. The organization has the ability to fundraise in a way that a municipal government can't, but we'll certainly be working together on that. And to bring all the financial and operational management of the parks district kind of under one roof. So to be an umbrella, you know, work with all the different stakeholders that certainly include the foremost being the city and the school district, but you know, the folks who run the park, DCFC, Hamtramck FC, the folks who are all working on the stadium, all these people under one umbrella to be able to just elevate the way that the parks operate. And so it's a real exciting mission, but at the heart of it is representing all the diverse community interests. So to, you know, be a community mouthpiece, we're represented by a community board. And to continue the mission of the parks, you know, as a major asset that we have, that, you know, we have the ability to elevate its mission. Next slide, please. So the organization actually has existed since 2020 when the city and the school district came together with some prodding from some of the funders who said, hey, look, we want you guys to work together, you know, in a more structured way. So we are governed by a community board that includes folks from the city and the school district, the other community interests. We're really excited about the ability to implement the plan that was formed in 2020 and exists on our website right now. So as I mentioned, the Recreation District, as we're calling it, includes Veterans, Playfair, Keyworth, Hamtramck Stadium, the playgrounds that are all around there. And we're going to talk more about that in subsequent slides. The organization does have a current budget. It was seeded by a few major grants from local foundations especially. Two of them that are especially interested in youth recreation and recreation generally, the Wilson Foundation, the Davidson Foundation. We also have a major ongoing gift from the Zakoff Family Foundation, from the family of Roger Zakoff, who grew up in Hamtramck and was a successful businessman. That's just the beginning of it. We certainly have the ability to go out to, you know, a lot of other similarly minded funders who want to support our mission, but we're off to a really good start with that support. We're already working closely with a lot of the current stakeholders. We want to continue to expand that umbrella. I've listed a few on the screen, the folks who have, you know, kind of an ongoing role in programming the park and who may be sitting on the board or continue to support us. But again, this is meant to be the widest umbrella that we can form. And, you know, going, looking forward, you know, over time, this is going to require the ongoing support, especially the city, the school district as the main stakeholders there. This is not intended to replace, you know, all the parks' operations activities necessarily. We want to, you know, supplement, elevate, continue things that work well, and, you know, improve on things that, you know, that could use it. Next slide, please. So the plan, as I mentioned, it's a 200-page document, but I think it's one of those 200-page documents that is actually a fun one to read, not ones with, you know, just all the continued jargon. A lot of great images in there, so if you haven't looked at it or looked at it in a while, please go to hamtramckparks.com, check it out. What I think is important about this, the plan itself, and it's separate from the purpose of the organization, is to radically transform 26 acres of unreutilized open space, recreation fields, and disconnected historic sites into a community-invested, inclusive, and world-class park. The master plan considers the future Hamtramck Recreation District as the heart of the city, a recreation destination that serves both the Hamtramck community as well as visitors to the area. So just wanted to read that as something to, you know, keep our eye on the ball, focus on the community, but this really is a large regional asset too that can help to show off, you know, Hamtramck in a really positive way, you know, around the region and beyond. 436 community members, you know, contributed to the outreach then. That was a pretty extensive thing, but, you know, we already know, you know, two and a half years later that we've got the need to continue to do a lot of stakeholder outreach to make sure that the plan is still hitting the market. Yep, next slide. So just some of the plan highlights briefly. The highlighted area is, you know, the area that HPC is focusing on. You know, one of the main issues is that we've got these really wonderful assets. Nobody really thinks of them as one connected space. And, you know, part of that is just like in your mind. I mean, are you thinking about this as a big destination, you know, to, you know, spend an afternoon, to, you know, not just come to one playground, but, you know, kind of walk all through the park, experience everything that it has to offer? So just making some design changes and making some of the kind of, you know, thematic decisions about, you know, having an ongoing aesthetic that looks consistent across all these parks really is going to be a big opportunity. So the parks are laid out, you know, in kind of a, you know, funny way historically, where we've got them kind of broken up. So what the plan does is imagines them as different neighborhoods, quote unquote, but that have better connections to them. So each one kind of can still be a destination, but by working on the wayfinding, the paths, the trails between them, it's going to start to feel a little bit more cohesive. New amenities, you know, big projects are envisioned in there. I'm not going to go through all of them today. Hopefully, we'll have an opportunity in the future. New pavilions, new playfields. You know, the baseball field that's over at Playfair is lying fallow right now, so that's an opportunity. She shows a cricket pitch being installed over there. The city manager has whispered in my ear to be in a new parking lot. That'll be high on the list as well. So, you know, paying attention to some of the smaller things as well. Not that a parking lot's a small thing, it's a big price tag issue. But, you know, we've really got to keep in balance what we have the opportunity to do with, you know, building large new structures, but also just, you know, keeping the walls painted, keeping the fences clean, keeping the sidewalks uncracked, you know, things like that. Next slide, please. These were some of the inspirational images. Not exactly what's going to be built over there, but it kind of indicates, you know, we've got the opportunity to bring new exercise facilities, gathering spaces. You know, the E-Festival takes place there now. How could that, you know, function better, you know, in a, you know, large facility, in large open space that, you know, has better maintenance with it? The top lane image is exciting to me, you know, having a loop trail system that, you know, feels safe and secure is beautiful. You know, picture something like they've got in the Detroit Riverfront now that, you know, is just a really inviting place that you enjoy spending time in. And here's a little bit of more detail on that trail loop system. Again, not exactly what's going to be built, but you can imagine, you know, something that has wayfinding points, tells you how far you've traveled, has really nice landscaping. They have an area for Storm Garden to run into, facilities for, you know, people to ride bikes and walk and sit, and then connect all those different neighborhood parks, as I mentioned, is a real, real good opportunity. And then, you know, ultimately connecting a southbound through the Greenway so that the parks become a better connected piece of a broader wayfinding system throughout the region. Next slide. So finally, what can be expected from us coming up? There are some playground improvements happening and other improvements going on throughout the park despite the fact that we're just in startup mode right now. So HPC worked with a number of partners to install the volunteer-led playground with the Kaboom nonprofit organization on the backside of Keyworth Stadium this summer. We're looking at some improvements to the other playground that's behind the Colonel Hamtramck grave site. In partnership with the U.S. Tennis Association, the practice tennis wall was restored this summer, and it looks great. The stadium restroom project is one in partnership with the city. Some of the grants, in fact, are going through the city primarily, but we're working much more closely together on that and want to make sure that that happens as a 2024 project. We mentioned the parking lot on Dance Street, you know, just having inviting spaces, good gateways to the parks. You know, the parking lots are our front door, especially for visitors who come from outside the city, so paying good attention to that. The city's alley program, the Goodson Alley, is one that we'd like to have on the list, and we've got an opportunity to do some cool stuff with the design of one of the edge, you know, kind of conditions of the park along Goodson. So ultimately, the goal would be for the Parks Conservancy to have, you know, what we call some level of site control starting in the spring is kind of the target. So that's been the goal of the organization since it began. So that includes negotiating some kind of a long-term lease. So what those details look like, you know, are certainly well in front of us. But what it does mean is that HPC is going to take on responsibilities that, you know, are currently filled by the city or the school district. Again, you know, figuring out, you know, kind of who's doing what is, you know, all in front of us. But hopefully, it'll be, you know, kind of a win-win for all parties where, again, what's working well in terms of maintenance, operations, programming, a lot of opportunities to add to the programming, you know, with regular events rather than just informal play. Both are good. But bringing big events there through the staffing out of the HPC is a great opportunity too. So we'll certainly be in touch, you know, on that effort over the next six months. A lot of work will go into that. But again, we're in startup mode, so the things that we additionally envision doing are a lot of major fundraising, all of which will go into the organization and into the parks district, creating an organizational strategy for ourselves, and building out some staff. So we envisioned it this won't just be me as a staff member, but fundraising professionals, you know, folks to be consistently at the park, to be responsive to needs, and to see through some of the major construction projects will be really important too. So putting a plan together to have all those things in place and looking forward to that being, you know, just a real benefit to the city in just a way that we haven't had it historically. So that was what I wanted to present, just kind of as an intro to me and a re-intro to the organization. And if time permits, or if you'd like, it'd certainly be available to answer questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we move to additions, additions to the agenda. Do we have one addition? Give somebody to motion that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to motion the Resolution 2023, I guess, 164D.
Yes.
Resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza.
Second. All right. All in favor of adding this?
Aye.
Thank you. So that would be D, Resolution 2023, 164.
164.
All right. Now we move to the public comment.
There's no public comment.
All right.
I can't speak right now.
Okay. Go ahead. All right. Now I move to the consent agenda. This is approved in a single motion with no discussion. We have A, approval of minutes from the October 10th, 2023, regular city council meeting. B, approval of invoice register date ending October 24th, 2023. C, approval of pre-approval expenditure date ending October 23rd, 2023. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. Next is the new business. And we have A, Resolution 2023, H161 approving Kenif Avenue reconstruction from Joseph Capo to Conant Avenue, design proposal.
I make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, we have John Hennessy here to speak on it. We got the engineer boss here today.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
We're in front of you this evening looking for funding to design the reconstruction of Kenif from Joseph Capo to Conant. This is the third phase on Kenif, which will kind of round that project out. This is the sixth local agency project that we've received from Wayne County, which is greater than any other community in Wayne County. And what that means is that they are funding through the federal government 81.5% of the construction costs, which are approximately $1.4 million. The schedule will be, assuming that we receive approval tonight, we'll develop a concept plan, meet with the city department heads, make sure everything kind of fits what their needs are. It is bid through MDOC because it is a local agency project through there. And we're shooting for a July, excuse me, June 7th bid award where the bidding is. So construction will happen next summer with substantial completion at the end of fall. And I'm here to answer any questions that the mayor and council might have.
What is the timeframe for this project?
It would be completed next summer and completion at this time next year.
Pretty similar to how we did the last two.
Yeah. We're kind of beholden to the MDOC schedule through there. They have a strict schedule that we have...
What about the construction going on right now?
That's for the lead service leads and the water main replacement. So that when we put the road in...
A week, about a week.
Yep.
One, and then next summer, do the construction?
Do the roadway, yep. We'll have the confidence now that the water main is reconstructed completely that we won't have any issues.
How about the other stuff? When they said they're going to be finished in October, they got 34 block alley.
We're working on the... The contractor just came in today.
They said October is going to be done. Now October is going to be done now. 34 block alley, it is not to start working.
You talking about the alley reconstruction?
Alley, commercial alley, and behind to a Holbrook Market.
They're out there, well, not right this moment, but they were out there, they started yesterday again. They're in the city ripping up.
Have you seen it?
Yeah, they're back in town.
I'm not sure which alley they're on right now, but they're here. So I know today they were out there laser, or whatever you guys do with prep work, the North Holbrook Alley was today. Maybe we've seen them out there, Mayor, I know they're out there.
Yeah, we'll see the note that they will close the alley this week.
Don't block.
Maybe they will come today, and they're going to start working maybe next week, November.
We're pushing through.
I haven't seen, October is going to be, all of them is done. October done, the working is not done.
Mr. Chair.
The contractor isn't aware, we've made him keenly aware that he has to stay in town until it's completed.
We've been all over him.
Yes, it's, yeah. The contractor knows that what a priority this project is for you folks, and we've made it a priority so that he understands it. And he's given us his word that he's going to stay in town until he completes them.
We're lining up stuff for the spring already.
That's right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counsel. This is exciting news. And I think the rest of the Kenif is the part just going to be done next year. I'd just like to remind our city administration, especially city manager, that, and Hennessy, that we don't want to make it difficult for the residents when it comes to garbage trash pickup. You know, the last time from Buffalo to Conant, we had a hell of a hard time. Well, I should say, the residents received a very big hard time getting their trash can out to the Kenif because they did not have the alley that side of the...
Yeah, yeah.
And many elderly and senior, you know, and disabled people had a hard time. So I want to make sure that this, you guys take a note that this side is, don't get that much of difficulties for the residents at the trash can or the priority with, you know, accommodate their needs.
Counsel, we're acutely aware that there's going to be headaches. We will do our best to work through them. We're anticipating them, but we also caution our business owners and residents in that area to brace themselves because inevitably, there are going to be complaining, there are going to be mad people. At some point, we'll have to grin and bear it, get through it. We did on two sections already. They came out beautiful. I believe this section is going to be beautiful. I think at the end, everyone's going to be really happy with it, but we're going to have some headaches. And we'll work through them as we get them, and we'll try to plan them as best we can. But as you know, we can only plan so much.
We will certainly try to accommodate everybody. Logistically, it's a complex street to work on just because of all the moving parts with the vehicle traffic, pedestrian traffic, and residents and businesses and everything.
Right, yeah. As long as, you know, they service the residents weekly service that they're supposed to receive. Because the trash can gets full and overlaps, and then they get the situation in the morning, and they get mad because they did not pick up the trash thing, you know, on time because of the construction.
We absolutely will take into consideration, Counselman. If problems arise, bring them to us. You know, I mean, the residents come to us too, but if they come to you, bring them to us, and we'll do our best to sort through it.
And somehow the street, almost like 10 months. When we open the street, it's still dark. They do patch it. It has a little, a little, some ash wall.
Where at, Counselman?
Buffalo and Belmont. The house Buffalo and Belmont, almost 10 months. When they open the surface, they make a dark. They give it like 10 months, it's 10 months.
You think that's the first time I heard about that one? Can we talk about that after the meeting?
Yeah, 10 months. From the January 2023. And we follow him every three months. He said we're going to do this month, this month.
Let's talk about that one later. I'm not really sure on that one.
Yeah.
The Conant House Buffalo and Belmont.
We'll take a look.
I think they really did it today. On Buffalo, Buffalo and Belmont. Not the other part when we just opened a couple days. This is different. This is across the street from the house. So on Belmont, on Belmont, yeah.
I'll have to check, Counselman. I'm not familiar with that.
Mr. Chair.
We talked with, when Bill Diamond, before he go, we talked to him, we said we promised to get it done. Bill Diamond, he go, now guarantee Angeles. We follow him, same thing.
We're getting a lot of these side stuff picked up. I mean, those contractors come through on average twice a year. So we usually stack them up and then they come through and blow them out. But I mean, I can check into this one. I don't know where this one falls on the list. And I mean, there could be a reason why it was left too. I mean, I can't speak for Billy's not here to defend... I mean, I can't speak for Billy, he's not here to defend this one anymore, and like I said, I don't remember hearing about this one in particular, but we'll check it out.
Just reminder that when you start doing construction in summertime, make sure you don't block the entire Knef.
Yeah.
We get a lot of businesses. The other side is a lot of residents, so it was kind of fine, but hopefully in this trip, we just kind of do half and half.
Yeah.
We're making businesses over there.
Yeah.
And we don't, we're not trying to get complaints.
No, no, we just try to make everybody happy as much as we can accommodate them, for sure, but, yeah, we, I think we're very familiar with Knef now in the reconstruction, and, you know, we'll learn from our, you know, best experiences with the interaction with residents and the business owners, both, you know, those that, we're here, we're here to improve the quality of life for people, you know, that's our goal, and so, and as Max said, you know, once it's all done, everyone will really appreciate it because the roads look so much better than they, than they did, you know, and this is the first time that we've had a real reconstruction of Knef, I bet you in fifty years, you know, candidly, it's always been patchwork before.
Thank you, Councilor, that was my second thing. We have a commercial areas, they have a delivery drop off, and the customers, it's a one-way street, it gets so complicated, accommodate our business owner to have access to the store for the customer.
Sure.
Thank you.
So according to this, one point four would be federally funded, and about three oh nine city contribution?
That's correct, from our Act 51 funds through there, which is a common formula for the FPC projects, and that this matches whole work reconstruction that we did and the earlier Knef projects that we did as well.
Okay. All right.
I have a last question, very good question. What is the timeframe, like how many years they're gonna be lost, the good conditions?
They are, the life cycle's thirty years, but of a project, but the project can last much longer than a life cycle, but the life cycle's dependent upon preventative maintenance being performed on things like joint sealing and things like that, and that's what we have to stay up on.
How do you think, whatever the part you done, this Knef?
Yeah, those are thirty years, they're typical thirty-year roads that we actually construct through there, but if we see a problem occur in year fifteen, we have to get out there and address it. We can't let it, we can't let it sit and not be addressed, that then we will get further deterioration to there, but the roads are constructed quite a bit different than they were previously. We have a stone underneath the roads now that carry the water away, and just to let the council know, what causes a lot of problems with these roads is when they're placed on clay base, it's the silt content within the clay, like if you rub soil in your hands and you get it in your fingers through that, that's the silt content, and silt swells at different amounts. It's kind of like, actually, like a Betinite in a McDonald's shake, you know, you ever take a McDonald's shake and you can feel your stomach kind of full, that's what's occurring, is a Betinite.
But you have experience.
Okay. But it's very similar to that.
All you gotta do is rub it out, though.
All right, I guess we can hold on.
Sure.
Well, John, you have to know you're a hit.
I did not know that. I like him, too.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Alsmiri.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023, 161 approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, the next one is Resolution 2023, H162, approving the acceptance of the Office of Justice Program. Bureau of Justice, Bureau of Justice Sisters Grant.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, we have the chief here, just in a nick of time, to talk about this today.
Totally, I guess. So this is the grant that I kind of mentioned a couple weeks ago at our last meeting about the Eastern Michigan University working with the police department and creating a virtual reality headset that will help us with our de-escalation training. Myself, EMU, and then Yvette, our grant coordinator, applied for an eight hundred thousand dollar grant for this program, will include all the training, the overtime, the creation of the virtual reality headset, and this will, we were actually announced that we were awarded the grant, and this will help us get that program up and running, and I think it's a really, really good, will help us deal with a lot of different issues and give our officers some really, really good training. So I'm hoping that you will approve the grant.
Oh, hundred percent.
Yes, yes.
And who knows grant?
Yes. And this is a non-matching grant, this is a just straight up, we don't have, the city does not have to match any funds, so that was.
Just in case you're gonna worry.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Ready?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Alsmiri.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023, 162 approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2023, 163, approving bid from Alson Cement Work and Construction to strip and replace the roof of the firehouse. Motion.
Second. Mr. Mayor, we have the fire marshal with us today, unfortunately, the chief couldn't hear, but I'm pretty sure the fire marshal can fill in nicely. This is really needed, it's been a really long time, never can seem to get that roof repaired, and this is our opportunity to do it, it is budgeted for as well. Mike, you wanna add to that?
Good evening, Council, happy birthday, Mayor. As may you know, firehouse is built in two separate sections, and we have two levels. The lower portion of our roof on our first level is, was last put on in nineteen seventy-five during our last expansion. That roof has life expectancy of twenty to thirty years, we're at fifty. We have ongoing renovations in the firehouse continuously due to flooding or leaking in the roof, causing drywall damage, cement damage, and so it went out to bid for replacement of the first floor roof. It's approximately forty-five hundred square feet, covers two truck bays, the administrative office and the kitchen. Received four bids, and when you see the bids, one of the bids is much lower, however, that bid does not include a tear off of that roof, that is an encapsulation. They go and, they take the rocks off the roof that are up there, and they spray polyurethane on it, it's only good for about ten years. Working with the DPW director, we received other bids from other companies, and one of the companies is, has done work here in the city before, it entails ripping the entire roof off and replacing it completely.
In short, we like to do it right the first time, not just patch it.
Any questions, discussions?
The Minister Chair. Yes, Governor. So we're putting fifty thousand dollars from the budget to, for that.
Yes, sir. Yep, it was budgeted for this, Councilman, as you know. We planned, we planned ahead.
How many square feet, four thousand, five hundred?
It's about forty-five hundred square feet.
How many, the estimate for many construction, just one construction, or they give many estimate?
So we received four bids. The first bid was for the encapsulation, and that one came in at, I believe, forty, forty-four thousand dollars, that's to spraying the polyurethane on it, that's not replacing the roof. The next bid was from Olson, who was recommended by DPW director, and that bid is a total of seventy thousand, five seventy-five. The next bid we received was eighty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty, and the third bid was eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars.
All of them same stuff or different stuff?
So all the three larger bids are the same process, it's removing the roof and replacing the entire roof. The forty-four thousand dollar bid is an encapsulation.
They gonna do all, change it?
It's, it's a flat roof, so.
Oh, the flat roof?
Yeah, it's not shinglesed, so.
Yeah, they do the flat roof.
Yep.
They gonna do the BTB of the white one or the black one?
I don't have an answer for that, but I see their quote, if it got put in there.
Because I got, no, not the rubber. I get many place offer this square feet, not this amount. Big different amount, different, different price. We put the nice stuff, like offer ten thousand square feet and seven thousand square feet, they didn't cost this amount.
Yeah, this is a two-layer system.
For this amount for the many construction.
I understand, Councilman, but, I mean, it's, we got four bids from four separate contractors.
They got four bids, they put, what if they put the amount, get the proof in right away?
Well, it's not, we didn't just pick one and say, we'll take that, I mean, we got, we had four different independent contractors come out and bid this, so, I mean, it's not like they colluded, I mean, we said we want to tear off, this is, give us your price, and they gave us pretty fairly close, except for the encapsulation, which is different.
So, John, a quick question. So when are, when are you getting it done? Soon?
Speaking with the contractors, if this gets approved tonight, they should be able to start on the roof within a week.
Hopefully get it before the weather turn.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman. Alsumari tried to make a point, he don't have experience with this, with the low cost, but there is the certified conductor, I don't know, but they did not apply here, so who apply here, of course, they're gonna increase the price, I understand that, but you wanna put it hold or look for, or you wanna like, we have to do it right now, looks like it is a long time, we did not do it. So if we wait for a little cheaper stuff, but we might not gonna have the contractor not certified or has the other issue, so.
Nobody did this stuff, only the people, they got license, only they have a certificate. Nobody did this stuff, there's no certificate.
But they did not apply here, they did not read the contract.
They put the website, they put the website, they get many people to apply.
Did we put in website?
I don't know that, Councilman.
I believe the fire chief reached out.
Oh, that is a question now.
So I know the chief was working closely with the DPW director on securing these.
There's another problem, though, they have to go to the process.
So I keep in mind, too, that that process does not always work for us, I mean, quite frequently, we put stuff out for bid and get zero responses, so very often, the not, we have to reach out to companies and ask them for it, they're just not, there's just so much construction out there, and I don't doubt that Councilman Samiri is very shrewd with us. I know him well, and I know how he is, he's got a lot of property, he's got a lot of good contacts, he's probably got someone for most everything, but the city's a little different, I mean, every contractor is gonna see the city and probably mark it up a little bit higher, I hate to say that, but it's just the nature of the game.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but do you follow the process, that's the way his question is coming.
Yeah, I mean, we bid it out, we got the bids necessary for it, we got more than required, we got four bids.
So he went to the newspaper or the website, anywhere?
I don't think he sent it to the newspaper, but, I mean, as I stated, we're not always successful with that, so sometimes we do reach out.
Still, next time, we follow, even though don't success, then we have answer ready. If like a Councilman Alsumari question, yeah, I need the newspaper, I need to follow up, but nobody came, the cheaper price, but I need to do it right now, so I have to do it. So next time, we're gonna follow the process, any other things.
Mr. Chair, I have one other question, later, the Councilman. So we can pass this bill, and maybe we can justify it with Councilal Alsumari contractor, if see if he has any bid that he wants, I mean, you still continue, you're gonna get it done, but.
Now, once you approve it, it's gonna go through next week, it's done. I mean, unless you want to put on hold and offer it to the table, then we can have a further research on that.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Young.
Yes, sir.
You know, I noticed there is two different estimators.
For which company?
Same company.
No.
Well, over here, it's the same company. It's different, I got two different estimators, the same company. One for forty-two thousand, three hundred, and the other one is two eight thousand and two hundred and seventy-five.
I don't have the bids in front of me to.
It's online. You talking this one?
I don't know, what's, what's on here is different than what you.
Okay. So the one from Olson that I have.
They're both from Olson.
There's two, I think they're combined.
I was guessing those are together.
Yeah.
If I'm not giving an estimate, I'm not a combined two estimate, should be one estimate.
But I, I'll show you what he's looking at.
I was gonna say, I have.
One, it says steel deck, and it says forty-two, three, forty-two thousand, three hundred, and then the next one says concrete deck, twenty-eight thousand.
So there's two, over our apparatus space, we have a steel roof. Over the kitchen is a different style roof, it's a concrete roof above that, so we have two different types of roof that they are tending to.
Councilman, they just split them for the same, it's so, like he just said, it's two phases of the roof, if you add them together, it's one bid, basically.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I never seen, if you're doing one work, you have one estimate, or you're gonna have to do two different estimates, you just.
I mean, sometimes they come, sometimes when they come in and bid, they break stuff up like that, I mean, I've seen that before for other things, like.
It is a separated roof.
Is it?
Yes. Between our kitchen and, and our bay and our administrative office, they are different.
Two types of.
We try, I mean, we do try to tell them when they bid it to, you know, we'll give them parameters, but it always comes back a little bit different, like this one obviously split in two, but it's not uncommon for that to happen. Together, it's the one, one bid, that's what the calculation was.
Is there, is the roof, as we speak, is it leaking, or?
Yes.
There's holes in it inside, like where it's falling in.
Wow. Mr. Chair.
I guess wait for last minute.
Councilman Samiri, please.
It's, it's, you heard from Fire Marshal Young, Sheriff Young, that it's the roof started leaking, and then they went through few companies, and one of them has serviced us before, and it's the one they're trusting, and as you know, this is the old firehouse roof, it's over, gone overdue. I strongly suggest to my colleagues to not to waste for the time to get it through so we can get the roof done, and that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, you.
Yeah, I guess why, they just wait for the last minute, why they mention like August, September, I guess I'm looking, we need to find out some people, patches emergency, or we find out how much they cost, maybe we put like grant if they don't have money.
Well, Councilman.
Not for the last minute, oh, we need to do it next week, I have this estimate.
Well, Councilman, it's been damaged for a long time.
I don't know, I guess have.
Well, the budget, I mean, was passed not too long ago, and then the fire chief proceeded to get the bids and get everything organized, so, I mean, it probably took a little bit longer than necessary, but it wasn't like all of a sudden bam, we just did it, I mean, we knew we needed to do this for a long time.
This process started with bids back in August.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, some of the bids come, are from early August on this project.
Okay, that makes sense, I was.
It takes us a while to get these bids sometimes, we're dependent upon the contractors getting time to come out and spend, I mean, a lot of them don't even want to bid it, a lot of them are like, eh, I got too much work, or I don't want to work for the city, or, you know, I mean, you name your excuse, you'll see.
You don't want to work with the city, you're not free.
So we, you'll see in the next, the next meeting, we're bringing the EMS to us, and we actually had, I think, four different EMS that already refused to bid it.
We received another one today.
Bye.
I heard this question many times, but people, I don't want to work with the city. I think people, they work free.
I would never turn away work, but, I mean, it's me, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I understand, Councilman Alsumari, it's true, most of the time, we bring everything last minute, but bid process went to the August, but only the question is here, did we follow the process, website and newspaper, and also Councilman Sodri, also right, if it is all, I understand, last minute, we might not approve, we see the two bid because there's the different types of kitchen one, the other one one. Understand all those things, so next time again, we should follow all the process, or we don't want to work from like the last minute to bring, those kinds of things, we can start speaking July, like that, so that's all he, he's thinking. Any other bid, we don't want next council meeting, oh, this is the bid we have, we are doing, no, discuss with the previous. up, this is the bid we have, we are doing. No, discuss with the previous parent to the bid and council, and we can speak about it. So, I think we all care, I believe I in all care with the approval it. To finish up, on next time, we have to worry about it.
All right, Mr. Mayor Proton is very diplomatic, he want to make everybody happy. All right, you can go on and vote.
Councilman Al-Sumari.
I do this time.
Okay.
So, that's a yes. That translates as a yes. Okay.
I say yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Chadri.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-three, one sixty-three approved.
Mr. Chair.
I, I have a request of Councilman Samiri's business rolodex.
Okay, that's what you want to do.
I know, like, you know, like...
See, you thought it was every evening.
Thank you. All right, the next one is resolution twenty twenty-three, one sixty-four, calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza.
Motion?
Second.
Can I read this, so the people that weren't aware of it?
Yeah.
Whereas the recent ongoing conflict between Israel and Palestine has resulted in the tragic loss of thousands of innocent lives, including women, children, and the elderly, and whereas the conflict has led to the displacement of thousands of individuals from their homes, either due to the absence of peace and security, or as a consequence of the destruction of their residents, and whereas millions of people are facing dire circumstances, lacking access to essential necessities such as shelter, clean water, food, electricity, and medical supplies, and whereas there exists a substantial risk that this conflict has further destabilized the Middle East and potentially spill over into neighboring regions posing a threat to global, to global peace and security, and whereas every individual residing in that part of the world deserves the right to live in an environment marked by peace, freedom, dignity, justice, and the same fundamental human rights enjoyed by people worldwide. Now therefore, be it resolved, the city council of the city of Hamtramck, Wayne County, Michigan, call upon President Biden and all elected officials and policymakers in our government to employ their influences and authority to advocate for an immediate ceasefire. We also implore them to facilitate the unrestricted flow of humanitarian aid into Gaza, with the dual purpose of preserving innocent lives, reinstating peace and stability, and preventing the further proliferation of violence to neighboring religions, uh, regions, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, can we have a moment of silence and draw for all these innocent lives, please?
All right, thank you. Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
We like to hear from the public, public comment. This is the history of the Hamtramck City Council meeting, not even one show up, and those people are the one talking all the time about the public comment, public comment, because the Palestine issue, because this reservation. There is no humanity. This is nothing is the human behavior, that's why I feel, okay? We destroy the, we as Americans, destroy the whole Iraq, cannot find one Hamas chemical, and, and the US Army general, they are report, there's no one Hamas chemicals, kill lots of innocent people, lots of children. How, how we are supporting as an American, as a human, close the boundary, and killing the people, bumping tons of bombs, and we are supporting, and our president, they are supporting to kill innocent people and the childrens. How, what kinds of world we are living? What kinds of world we are living? That is my question. Why we cannot do the compromise things, and we are sending again the relief for the Gaza, who create that kind of situation to give the relief? You putting billion dollar, billions of dollar military aid to kill the people. You go ahead kill Hamas, no problem. Why you killing innocent people and the kids, and block whole area, no water, no electricity, nothing, and our public, I don't see any one to the shame on you guys, always come and talk, oh, I need to talk, I need to talk, we have to hear, how I see your voice today. Those kinds of people shame on you guys, who always say, I want to speak, our voice matter, your voice today is not matter, because you racist, you don't worry about anybody else, you worry about yourselves, first of all. Second, the our Congress and our president, the president have to think about it, okay? There is, has to go the nineteen sixty-seven, sixty-five issue. If I'm a human, I'm going to go there, that situation, not the, not the killing all the childrens. How, how is possible? How is poss, I cannot see the picture. So, if we don't like that, it's one God. Remember, these United States, we are in here, and, and this is the country for immigrant, no question about it. And we'll take the step up to change the world, if you cannot change, Mr. Joe Biden, we'll do it. Michigan, remember Hillary Clinton lost by the twelve thousand boat, you win by the over twenty thousand. It's up to all our people, we can change Michigan up and down, including governor, including everybody. Over thirty thousand boat, we control, to make the decision who going to be president, she'll race, win or lose, including governor, again and again. I'm requesting our president, Congress, Senate, to put your brain together, how we're going to solve the problem, not kill the children, innocent people. Thank you.
Thank you. I can see an excuse for some people, because we did not post this online, so some people didn't know, but like...
But always, they always come here.
I know, I know, it's, it's the most pressing topic now, and anyone can talk about it anytime. Doesn't have to stick to the agenda, the first round of comments, actually, in the second, too.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I understand your frustration, and we sent this message to our president, elected officials, and I think there's a meeting tomorrow for all Arab and Muslim elected officials in Michigan, to also call for immediate ceasefire, send a message to the president and elected officials, for the same purpose that we did today. I hope that our voice will be heard, to stop the loss of innocent people, kids and children, and all the, you know, and put an end to the humanitarian crisis in that area of the world, and if anyone else wants to discuss...
Mr. Chair, this is the purpose of bringing the resolution, to send the message to the US, that, you know, we are looking after the innocent people, they're, they're dying left and right, and the same, Mr. Mayor Proton get angry a little, you know, too excited, but the reason came from only watching all those news and seeing people die left and right, and young kids, and our president, Mr. Biden, he has experienced to lost a kid, and he, he should understand the feelings of people, that where they're losing their young kids, and two, three, four, five years' kids, I mean, if you were there dying, they are crying, you know, it's heartbreaking. So, we, you know, the first condolences to everyone who ever losing their innocent people, either Palestine or, you know, Gaza, whoever, because they don't have, they have right to live in this world, but we are making them to live before their time arrived. This is very sad. So, this is a request to Congress, Senate, and President, to send proper action to this Gaza, to, you know, stop the fighting, and bring peace to the world. This is my assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. We didn't, we didn't mention the American hostages here, because they were released already, in the first version, as mentioned, but they were released safely, and even today, I mean, or yesterday, some hostages were released, elderly one, and they spoke very well about the people who kept them hostage, they said they treated them well, and they gave them their medicine, kept them safe, and that, that, again, go against the, you know, fake news about beheaded babies and raped women, which turned out to be alive, so I just hope that we watch news from both sides, when we hear about something, not to take one side of the story and just build our opinion based on that. We have to be, you know, reasonable, see the other side of the story, and then take stance. I see the, so many, there's millions of people, American people who are very wise, and they started protesting to stop the war, because over, close to seven thousand innocent people now have been lost, and it's very sad. I mean, every day, there's hundreds of people are being killed, and I think that the enemy is underground, and I think the continued, you know, attack will destroy Hamas, it's just killing more people, more innocent people. And so, that's what I have to say. Anyone else want to...
Mr. Chair.
From Councilman Abu Musa and then...
Mr. Chair, and my colleague, thank you to bring this resolution, it's perfect time, on time. I hope President Biden and our Congress and Senate, they heard our voice. This killing doesn't start last October seventh, it start decade and decade, and we don't want, we won't condemn all those innocent people who killing innocent people, we condemn all those killing, but decade and decade, Palestinian people in Gaza, Ramallah, and some other surrounding area, they are always victimized, each and every time. Israeli soldiers killing them like you're not a human being, this is the way they treat the people. I'm, I'm really, really upset. I used to live in New Jersey, good friend of mine, he lost eighteen members of his family. I talked to one of his brother yesterday, we went to the same, same college there, this is the way I know each other. Every innocent life is valuable. I urge to the President Biden and our Congress, open your eyes, see the reality, and ceasefire immediately. What you, what's Israel doing? Yeah, there are people, twelve thousand, twelve hundred people, or fourteen hundred people was killed, we condemn those things, this killing. But now, what Israeli soldiers doing? They're bombing without any humanity there. They bombed hospital also, kill five, four hundred people, yesterday there were, largest number of the people killing yesterday, they bombing hospital, every single place, people doesn't have a food, medicine, water, anything there, and the Israel make whole Gaza is a open jail, in the biggest jail in the world, two point two million peoples is a open jail in the world, they're living there. We need to make the better, and same time, we like to see some people occupied the other country, same to can, I'm sorry, I don't take a different way. When Russia occupied Ukraine, we condemn those things, we're fully against of those. Why you cannot open our eyes when Israel occupied Palestine day by day, day by day, decade and decade? Where is our administration? Where is our president? Oh, I'm sorry to say, like, President Joe Biden, President Trump's sleepy Joe, he is sleeping now. I hope he gonna hurt our feeling, he gonna hurt our voice, and they're gonna do immediate ceasefire to stop killing innocent people, and we condemn all those killing. Thank you very much to give me the opportunity, thank you, Mayor, I think my colleague to bring the resolution on time, and it is very important resolution, and we support it, it is our heart, we feeling from our heart. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you know, I'm sick of our current administration. Biden and his crew, who are not really stopping what's going on in Palestine, are, they are with one side, and, and the funny thing is, he flies freely, you know, you're, you're not allowing anyone to fly in that region, but you're allowed to fly and go support Israel's and what they're doing. You know, I have sent an email to his office, you know, we're, we're sick from this administration, they're not showing, you know, it's funny how he says, I'm, I'm there for the people, you know, you know, like, like my councilman Abu Musa said, Trump have said, sleepy Joe, I think he still hasn't woke up from sleep. You know, how can you support or send so much money to the Israeli, you know, occupation, really, they're taking over Palestine. You know, you just imagine people are, you know, in a box, you're not allowed to go anywhere, you can't fly, you can't drive without their, with their permission. You know, you guys, you know, children who are nearby, either Jordan that want to go to school, they have to go through that process of checkpoint. Most of us have, you know, flew, you go through that TSA, it's worse than the TSA. And you talking about kids who are under twelve years old that has to go through that almost every day, back and forth from, from school back to their house. So, I'm, I'm happy that we have this resolution, we're happy that we are kind of being united, and just to mention the Hamtramck Muslim community and beyond, our, our, our schedule for our protest, that we will make sure our voices are being heard, to those who we have elected from our Senate, state rep, Congress, that it's ridiculous how some of them that even from their own side, and J. Peters, who really stated where he gets a lot of votes from the Muslim community, but states, you know what, let's have, let's pass a resolution, so we could fund Israel, even though they don't have no chair, president. So, I'm encouraging all Hamtramck residents who live in this beautiful city, that there is a meeting for this protest that will be held this Saturday at four zero zero one Miller Street, at Oakland School, three P M. I encourage everybody to show up, we will discuss on how we will do this protest and where at. So, I'm encouraging all our community leaders, imams, rabbis, pastors, pleased to be there at this meeting, and show your support, as we have showed support to all many communities, you know, and, and it sounds like our mayor Proton said, even though if it's not in the agenda, but they always show up, even there's nothing serious about the agenda, how come they're, they're not here today? So, my heart goes to those individuals, you know, families, and, you know, when you see pictures and videos of these kids, their heads cut off. So, you're, you're saying you're bombing Hamas, until today, they haven't announced they have killed anybody from Hamas. I haven't seen anything, any member saying, well, we have targeted a base, or a house, or somewhere where Hamas are hiding. They actually killing just innocent people, elders, you know, hospitals, houses, that's all the we see, we don't see anybody that's carrying an AK-47 or a rifle that has passed away. So, I'm really sick, you know, sick in, you know, this administration are, are just taking up one side, and it's not really where, and I know America has the power to sit down both sides and say, listen, both of you are could live in one, in one area, and, and, you know, it's either this, this side can be for Palestine, this can be for Israel, and, and we can finish this. But sadly, they're continuing, letting this happen, and more and more Palestinian are passing and dying for no reason.
Thank you. And I just want to add that, the fact is, there, there is no power that can stop resisting occupation, because it's not a group of people who are resisting, this is an idea, this is like, that will last for generations, no one can destroy it. Even if you eradicate one group, you know, a new one will show up. I was looking at a picture the other day for soldier with his passport, that his mom is from Netherlands, and his dad is from Belgium, and he was born in New Mexico, and he is defending Israel and saying that Palestine is his land. So, this is, this is the whole story, the people who are coming to that area of the world. I know the United States committed to defend Israel, but just the fact that you can say that three thousand years ago, my grandfather father passed by this land, so this is my land, that doesn't make no sense. Yemen was a Jewish country in the past, then it became Christian, and then the same people converted into Islam. So, we can't have someone who is like a Christian can come and say, this used to be my land in the past, two thousand years ago. It doesn't make no sense, the same people were evacuated, exiled from their land, and it doesn't make no sense to just, you know, tell them, you have no right in this land. So, I, I think the problem will continue for generations, if we can't find a solution for it, and no power can, you know, end the idea of resistance in that land. So, I think we have talked enough about this, and we can...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Katsamalna Abu Musa.
Thank you, Mayor. You remember last years, when they get some happen for Ukrainian? We support the Ukrainian for other country when they, when they hit the Ukrainian. Look what happened in United States, you Biden. That's what happened a lot of people when they have big races. When Palestinian, they following has a land like almost 75 years, they keep. There's allowed to keep to fight this land. Whatever they did. Last year, we support Ukrainian. Now, again, I support Palestinian. We support the resolution. And United States, this time isn't gonna be same all the time. When people make mistake, they do something wrong, we're not gonna agree with them. 2024, they're gonna see what happened. All the Congress, all the president, all the governor for the next election. That's what I want. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Councilor Chagri? Well, first, I'd like to thanks to my colleague, Muhitna Wood, and Mayor Hamar Gali, for brought forward this resolution. This is the time to let the United States as well as the whole world, that we are with the humanity, the way, the way they portray things on the media, and then they presented to the people that one man attacked, and then everybody is blamed for that. The Gaza people did not deserve this war. The men who caused it, they did not go after him for the group. They're going after the civilians. That is so pathetic. That is so unacceptable. Imagine if we get those surrounded by these Mexicans or Canadians, and here in Hamtrami, all locked down. And, you know, for one man who started fighting, and then we are all locked down in the basement. Can you imagine? This is how they're going through in Gaza. People are not allowed to flee or leave and get help. And there is no water supplies, medical supplies, or food provided to them. At least they deserve that. They're in war. And I echo with my colleagues, mayor, and rest of the administration, to let this administration, the Congress, our United States leaders, like officials, to stop the ceasefire, ceasefire, and provide them the supplies at least. This would help at least mitigate and have someone to survive. And I'm deeply sorrow with these people losing their lives. And we will continuously raise our voice for those who deserve to live, deserve to have their fancy, deserve to be breathing, living soul and freedom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I want to clarify one more thing. So, we, we as a community, we as a human, bringing this resolution, not like a Muslim. I was just one of, this is my, one of the colleague mentioned that, but as a human, and of course, as a Muslim, as a human, first of all, as a community and as a human, we're bringing that resolution. So, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned, we are sending medicine in the Gaza. So, we are sending the medicine in Gaza to use the hospital, right? There is lots of people go. So, we are bumping that hospital, make sure we cannot use the medicine. So, we are sending the medicine and bumping over there and make sure they cannot use that medicine. That kinds of criminal activities we are doing right now. There's no shame, shame, shit.
Yes. I mean, yesterday, I was reading the headline, ordering to evacuate Al-Aqsa Hospital, which has hundreds of patients, including tons of people in ICU and some refugees too. And how do you expect to evacuate the ICU patients in 24 hours? And where would they go? And last week, the top this hospital was pumped to over 500 people died. And I read in a statement by someone that says, if you control the water source, the electricity source, and the food source of your enemy, then that tells me that you are an oppressor and humane. And if that's the case in Gaza, everything is under the control of Israel, and they can stop it at any moment, which means if you like a cat in a room, it start gonna fight, it's gonna fight, right? So, you are like millions of people in a small area, and you expect them to be silent and not resisting, you know? That, that doesn't make no sense. So, with that, I think we discussed enough, and I, we can move on.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Elsmere.
Yes.
Councilman Chagri.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2023, 164 approved.
All right. Thank you. And that was the last, the last resolution we will discuss for tonight. And we move to the reports. I don't want to keep this for too long. I don't have much to say. The activities I had, or I had over the past two weeks. I attended a charity dinner in Durban last, I mean, 10, 10 days ago. And it was raising money for teachers in Yemen who are without salaries for years because of the crisis. They were able to raise 270,000, which was a good number. And last Sunday, I attended the Will Myers event for his wife, Twela, to designate a peace, peaceful dedication for his wife and to commemorate the first anniversary of her departure of the war. And I met so many people, her friends, and I enjoyed it. I mean, that's it for today's report. We have talked enough. And if Mr. Mayor Potem has anything to say, you can go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm not gonna talk. I'm gonna keep all those talk for next council meeting for my, all those fans.
All right. City Council, anyone wants to add anything?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Rafai.
As we went to Travis City for the MML, me and my colleagues, it was a great event. Our city clerk was there. Our former city attorney, Jim Allen, was over there. It was a great convention. We, we learned a lot. We met so much city officials. You know, we shared our differences and exchanged issues and ideas between each cities. And I was happy and glad to actually meet two Muslim mayors, who we always see. One of them is the mayor of Ben Harbor, Mayor Merkees Muhammad, and also mayor of Durban Heights, Bill Bazi. It was a great, like I said, it was great, and we all had fun.
I'm not supposed to say that at those conferences.
Oh, oh, as they say, anything, a state between us over there. But we enjoyed it. And it was a really good convention. And I'm looking forward for other conventions where you're able to build bridges between other communities and cities.
That was fun. I wish I was there. Anyone else?
Somebody didn't show up.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Yes, I have the very much same things. We went to the conference, Travis City, such a nice place. After, after conference, we enjoy a lot also. And thank you, Rana, give us a good time also for this. But one person, and like really, we know some people watching our conference, watching our council meeting. Bill Bazi, he's, he say one thing about you. He say, you are very lucky people, lucky mayor. All your council is united. We have a, we have a different opinion, but when he stand, we stand for united. He is really, really appreciate, and he make a good comment. And we meet other little officials, and it is a good time.
Yes.
And we learn something. Thank you.
Well, when I meet him, which I meet him frequently in some events, I keep, I keep complimenting you guys. I say, I have a very good council members. We make a good team. And because he, his council members give him hard time. So, I told him that's not the case with us. We are, we have some differences and disagreements, but we solve it peacefully. And that's the meaning of teamwork. So, yes, thank you guys for keeping it up that way. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I'll just make this real brief thing. I want to thank everyone to be here today. And yes, we attended the MML convention. It was fun. Ms. Rana, our clerk, were with us the first time, and we had a blessing time with Rana and Jim. But I want to also thank our city manager to accommodate it and set up all those things, you know, hotels, reservation, everything through smooth. And we learned a lot of things. We exchange our values. We obtained, or I would say, collected many information for the other city officials. Lastly, I'd like to give shout out to my Hindu friends. They had a Sharire celebration, the Hindu puja is what they call it, its only congrats and celebration, happy celebration of Hindu friends here in town and all over the world. And lastly, I'd like to encourage everybody to see the, see what's going on in Gaza and Israel. I mean, I'm, we're not against the Israeli authorities. We need to find a way to find a common ground for humanity, for the human being. We are all here on earth to live. This earth is created for everyone. Just for one person, one particular group causing and destroyed everybody. It doesn't make sense. And I hope you guys continue to support this and continue sending the message to the White House, the Washington, and the world leaders, that how long we gonna be continuously watching the loved ones and the Palestinian suffer? This is, I mean, it started before I was born, and this is 74 years going on. And we can find a way, a solution. But I think it's the people who are in power, they, they take money from these people, and then they don't want to say anything. So, you know what I'm saying? So, this is why everybody is just looking at one country and not the other side of the world. There's two part of the world. The native people are, were there. Okay, we can have the both country live there, but actually, we wanted to, we don't want to see this solution. We want to create us and more, so we can get more funding, more guns, and weapons sold to that region, so they can fight each other and make money. You know what I mean? So, that's all. Have a great 1990.
Mr. Mayor, I just gonna have quick third second. First of all, happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Secondly, we're talking about MML. Thank you to Khalid Rafai to driving us back and forth. He don't even have confidence on us to drive a car.
And.
Thirdly, I'm gonna congratulate and thanks to Detroit City Council. They passed a resolution regarding favor of the working family in Detroit, who we are on strike. I'm gonna thank you and shout out to them for their, you know, support and standing up for right. So, that's, that's all I can say. Thank you. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to bother you again. So, Mr. Muhitna Wood thanks you guys, but he never thanks us. Me, Max Gabrino, and Tony Fucci. Since you guys was not here, we are taking care of the Hamtrami city. So, we never get thanks. I'm sorry.
Councilman, they were worried in the election time.
But we still take care of the city. Tony was here. City manager Fucci, since you guys was not here, we try to protect our city.
Always be a good job.
We always appreciate that. All right. Thank you. I'm trying to save some money, save the city some money, but not for. All right. Thank you so much. You, Councilman Rafai.
Yes. I'd like the mayor, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you for everyone that come today, even city manager Oday, Tony, and Hannah Inger, chief police, and good my friend.
First of all, first of all.
Who's the friend? Hold on, hold on. I put a little bit of Greg on you.
Good my friend. And I learned a lot for MML. We accept a lot how to, how to work, how find out a lot. And thank you. And thank you, Khalid, we drive and make safe. And thank you, Rana and Jim Allen, make good fun.
You're the fun person?
Yeah. Yeah, make, nice. And for United States, White House, the massive, they're gonna see next years. The people living in Hamtrami, in Durban, in Wayne County, Michigan, in other Michigan, New York, California, all the state, the massive, they're gonna come next years. Whose people support the straight, we're gonna work in with them. Whose people they play game, everybody, they're gonna play game same way. Nobody gonna leave the ship same way. People, they play game us, be grace. I would just told you, last year, we support Ukrainian, because we didn't need those people make some bad. Now, we support Palestinian, because this is the right way. We didn't need people to hit other, the other person. They hit the whole city for Hamas, couple person, 27 houses, Alara, and hospital over 1,000 people.
7,000 killed.
1,000 people for a hospital, for one place. And our city, it look like, that's a garden. They, they clear out. How they gonna work with those people? How we gonna agree with that one? Be grace. But next years, we're gonna show up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak for anyone?
Yes.
First, happy birthday.
Thank you.
And then I wanted to say, yes, we did have a wonderful time at MML. And I enjoyed going there. I'm not a big going to conference type of person. I like to be in my office doing my work, you know? I've been here two and a half years, haven't been on a conference. But I've truly, truly enjoyed our time together. It built a different kind of relationship between us. I like you all as politicians. I like you even more as a person now, you know? So, I really enjoyed myself and hopefully, again in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jimmy Devis.
I'll let him know. Thank you so much.
All right. Now, public comments, Eddie?
No, no public comments.
No public comments. All right.
The chief, I look, the chief wants to.
No, I said no Max on here. Why is there no?
I removed myself.
Oh.
Nothing today.
Privacy.
Just, I don't know if it was mentioned, because I was late. I apologize. The trunk or treat is tomorrow. So, hopefully, it was mentioned, and you're all planning on coming and having a good time and passing all kinds of good news. Thank you.
It's a potluck party, right?
Why?
No, no.
It's Halloween.
Halloween, Friday.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Potluck's next week. This is for the kids out Friday. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Bring candy.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Potluck's on Halloween day. But that's not really advertised.
Not city by.
Yeah.
Turn like, why are you saying?
Motion second.
Thank you.